Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here with us tonight. I am going to do a roll call, but first I want to announce that the executive session that was for 6:00 PM tonight was canceled, but it will be on the agenda for our next meeting. And we have several members before I go on to our roll call who will not be present right now, but will join us later on in the meeting. That's Michael Malon and Calavetta and Kristy Fish, who has a family emergency. So I will stop my roll call tonight with Melissa Boyd.
Here.
Kate Massanassi.
Yeah.
Michelle Busso.
Yeah.
And myself, Paula Whitford. That said, I would have Ms. Ms. Susan Ben come to the podium to do a roll call on the town council's behalf.
Council President McIntyre.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins is not present. Councilwoman Berger, here. Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
And Councilwoman Rose is also not present.
Councilwoman Rose called. She had a family emergency to attend.
Could you please join us in the pet allegiance to the flag? So I will skip over C and D as in the order of the agenda. And we have here a recognition. Okay, thank you. So with that said, I would turn it over to Mr. Prince.
You know, Chair, you need me, everybody? I'm going to play the role of facilitator this evening. So per the school committee bylaws, Article 7, Section 7.2.4, a regular business meeting of the school committee includes a public comment period. The purpose of community comments is to provide an opportunity for members of the public to make a statement regarding the agenda items. Tonight's agenda item is Studio Jade's presentation of our Stage One application and matters of general policy for which the committee has responsibility or jurisdiction on. During the business meeting this evening, comments will be made and be directed at both parties, town council and school committee members to matters affecting the public's interests. In this case, again, it would be Studio Jade's presentation and the district's Stage One building application to ride. Members of the public will be invited to address both committees, and those will be following protocol to use. So we will begin with Studio Jade making his presentation. Phil Conti is here for that. When that is done, there'll be a Q and A question comment section or period, excuse me, done by both committees, and they would just simply raising their hands and simply turning on their mics. When that aspect is completed, then we will open it up to the public. Those who are here in the audience, and you too will get an opportunity to ask questions regarding the presentation or regarding the Stage One application. For your questions, unlike the past where we have clipboards, this evening we would need you to come forward to the podium. You would need to introduce yourself, stating your name and your address, and then ask your question of the presentation or your question of the application. It's important that you mention your name and your address for us to capture it down in the minutes. Because as in the past where we had the clipboard, we don't know, we do not have the clipboard this evening. Individuals may only approach the podium and speak once right now, but if time permits, we may allow a second question or possibly a third question. Please try to keep your comments as brief and focused as possible. Speakers are encouraged to write their thoughts down before approaching both committees. Groups and organizations are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson. And that's sort of the process. When the public is done speaking, if their Q and A will return to the committees, and they too will have an opportunity to follow up with clarifying questions based on what the public has said or things that may have generated from the conversation. When that's done, then the committees will entertain individual motions. Final point around the motions. For tonight's purpose only, the motions are really for three things. A, to submit the Stage One application to ride as presented. B, to make changes here present to the presentation and application. Or C, send the application back to the school building committee. The committee will work on the application and presentation and bring it forward at the next town council meeting, which is on the evening of the 14th. So that is the protocol. And that is our hopes to this evening is to really vet the application and provide both committees an opportunity to weigh in and equally the public to weigh in. So on that, I will step down and turn it over to Studio Jade, Mr. Conti.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I see some new faces, so I think it might be prudent for me just to take a moment to introduce myself and Studio Jade and what we have been doing in South Kingston for a number of months. So my name is Philip Conte. I am the president of Studio Jade. I am an architect. Studio Jade is a 30-person firm, offices in the Mid-Atlantic and Northeast, and we are an architecture and engineering company. But we also specialize in facility condition assessments, and we conduct them nationwide. Most recently, we completed assessments in two Connecticut school districts. Starting in October, we will be assessing the town buildings in North Kingston. And we recently completed all of the Department of Transportation facilities for the state of New Jersey. So it is a lot of experience we bring in conducting these assessments. These assessments are really the core of the Stage One. I want to start by going over an agenda, and we're going to go through this pretty carefully. I want to describe the Stage One in a little bit more detail for you. Discuss the activities that we've completed to date. Review the data that we've gathered and summarize that. Talk about some of the trending facilities that we identified, as well as touch on demographics and enrollment, because that does play a part. We'll talk about the submission of the Stage One and then the next steps. So the Ride Stage One, this is part of a two-step process that is required to receive housing aid reimbursement. Right now, your reimbursement is about 35%. There are incentives that may be available depending upon the projects that are submitted in Stage Two. In its most simplest form, Stage One identifies the need. What is the need of South Kingston schools? And that is due on September 15th. It does not recommend a commitment to a particular project. It does not represent a commitment to bond. It simply identifies what are the facility needs. The School Building Authority will review this application over several months and report back to you with either, yes, we agree these needs exist, and please proceed to Stage Two. Stage Two is the solution process. That is where we come together as a group, look at what the needs are, and discuss and debate the merits of the most prudent solution to satisfy those needs. The activities that we've completed to date, we have conducted our facility condition assessments. We've conducted interviews with the principals and the staff. We've sent out surveys. We've conducted an educational adequacy assessment with our educational planners. And we continue to gather data and engage with the community in a couple ways that we're going to go in a little bit more detail. Through that survey process and some of the engagement activities, people had the opportunity to respond and tell us other things that were on their mind. So I included some of the quotes through this presentation. This is the first one. "We have incredible potential in this district. We have dedicated teachers and wonderful students. Our facilities are horrible." The methods we used to gather the data started with a survey. That survey was responded by over 650 participants, and that is a significant return. The results and questions are included in that Stage One. But it did two things that contradict each other. One was that it reflected a divided community. And we're going to review some of those questions. But it also showed incredible support behind one common goal. And we'll review that. Another quote from a participant. "Unless you address the state of the facilities immediately, you will continue to lose families, including ours." So the first question, one of three. Is SK appropriately supporting students' social and emotional needs in the school system? That was almost 50/50. Yes and no. So I want to repeat the question again. Is SK appropriately supporting students' social and emotional needs in the school system? Over 300 people said yes. Over 300 people said no. The next question. Is the SK School District engaging students in ways that will keep them interested in school? Again, almost 50/50. Is the SK School District engaging students in ways that will keep them interested in school? Over 300 people said yes. Over 300 people said no. The last question. Is the SK School District preparing students for real-world opportunities? A little bit better, but still 300 said yes. Over 300 said no. So these questions were not necessarily rated to facilities. But our interpretation of that is that there is a need for apparently some equity. And our opinion is a lot more communication. Because what we saw in the schools is not getting out to the community. We were very impressed with the quality of your principals, your school leadership, your staff. But clearly, the message is not being communicated appropriately. What everyone was united behind was, on average, that no one considers your facilities good or excellent. At best, they're fair, and half of them thought they were poor. The schools are safe, warm, and dry, but they all, but they look old, worn, and shabby. So another exercise we conducted were forums. We had a district-wide forum. I'd say it was moderately attended. We had some good discussions. Then we had school-specific forums. They were poorly attended. The educator clutches, where our education, educational planner and myself and others spent the whole day at each school talking to educators. That was, that was satisfactory. Your teachers had a lot to say, and we took that information in. And then the beginning of our engagement, we made a number of presentations to the school committee on the assessments as they were progressing. The last comment here. "The high school could be and should be the flagship school. Our academics, art, and sport teams are top-notch. Facilities are broken, leaving us all feeling broken too." One particular activity that we've asked a number of attendees to do, and we used at a number of our exercises, was to rank the level of importance for a series of facility guiding principles. What is important to you? And there was a tie for the first one. And that that was that they want facilities that are future-ready. Okay, that makes a lot of sense. But the other one that was tied for one was that they want their schools to be equitable. Number two was warm, safe inviting, followed by small school feel and large school pride. In this age of school choice, SK cannot compete with the updated, modern campuses of our surrounding communities, and we're losing droves of students as a direct result. So let's begin with looking at your facilities. This is a timeline across the top, beginning in 1920 and going to 2020. Vertically on the side are the list of your facilities. The dots identify when they were originally constructed, and the triangles identify major renovations. You see that there are two vertical bars shaded with a caption of 20 to 25 years. You should expect that your major building systems, roofs, boilers, plumbing fixtures, they have a lifespan, 20 to 25 years. Yes, we've seen them last much longer. But it's not uncommon to expect that you will be making a major investment in 20 to 25 years of its original construction. And that is apparently what happened around the 1990s. But as you can see, you are now due for that major investment again. The facility needs by square foot is a, a model that allows you to look at what buildings will require the most investment compared to its size, right? Not dollar amounts, but the most investment per square foot based on its size. And we identified a zone of about 150 to 250, which would be appropriate, and that's where many of your schools fall. However, Wakefield Elementary and Curtis Corner far exceed that need by square foot zone that we would typically expect. And of course, when we look at the needs based on the building itself, we were not surprised that the high school requires the most investment because of its size, and then followed by Curtis Corner, and then the remaining schools. This is an overview of the 10-year forecast based on our facility condition assessment that does not, that does not include any programmatic improvements. This simply restores and repairs your buildings as they are. And that total 10-year forecast for your portfolio of buildings that are remaining online, you'll see that Wakefield and Curtis Corner are not in this pie chart. The schools that you see here, including the Hazard Building, is about 103 million. Now, I know that seems like a significant amount of money, and it is. But it is not uncommon for these numbers of buildings, the vintage of the buildings. We've seen this in many other municipalities within the state of Rhode Island. Which brings me to this very important slide. This is a chart that describes the, the annual dollars per square foot that should be budgeted for deferred maintenance and repair. So let's start with that top line. This comes from a facilities article that I located. In 2020, the range of annual dollars per square foot went from zero to $7. That means that there were institutions that were investing somewhere between $0 and $7 per square foot of their portfolio in deferred maintenance and repairs each year. They also said in that article that if you wanted to future-proof your school, it would be around $11 a square foot. We've done assessments for the entire campus of Princeton University, who has funds that are in the billions. funds that are in the billions, and they still carry deferred maintenance. No institution or public entity has zero deferred maintenance. So the ride maintenance mandate that is in, in effect would put you around three dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot. There are other formulas, three percent of operating costs, et cetera, and when we do that, we determined it's around three dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot, which is probably the fair amount. I expect that they did a lot of research to come up with this mandate, and rightly so. Because Providence, I'm sorry, not Providence, the entire state of Rhode Island school facilities were in very bad shape. That's why they passed a number of multi-hundred-million-dollar bonds to improve school construction. So this maintenance mandate is warranted. So if we look back at what the historic spending is, on average, it looks like we're only spending about seventy-five cents to a dollar nine a square foot a year. And that's not enough. And what we're seeing is that if you want to try to catch up in ten years, you're looking at the seven to nine-dollar range. So trending facility needs. There's two categories, deferred maintenance and ones that we call student-centric, and those student-centric needs regarding the facility are ones that focus on educational adequacy and equity amongst your district at all your schools. They are facilities that support your program and your curriculum. So we look at two of these categories. This person graduated from the school system over thirty years ago, and most of the facilities are still the same. Students should have access to clean, modern facilities which support their ability to learn and grow. Think it's important to touch on enrollment and demographics. The historic analysis between two thousand and eleven through twenty twenty-one showed a steady decline in enrollment. This is information from Nesdeck. In two thousand and eleven, there were three thousand three hundred fifty-nine students. In twenty twenty-one, Nesdeck forecasted two thousand five hundred and sixty-three. The actual October twenty-one enrollment was two thousand six hundred and eight. They were very accurate with their forecast. So extending the next ten years, the projected analysis indicates a continuing decline in enrollment. Starting at the two thousand five hundred and sixty-three projection in twenty twenty-one to two thousand one hundred and eighty-two students in twenty thirty-one. I cannot tell you if their projection will be as close as it was the previous ten years. But this is data that we are asked to submit as part of our ride stage one demonstrating the needs for South Kingston. So let's begin with the high school. The ten-year forecast for the high school, again, no programmatic improvements. This is restoring and repairing what you have is about forty-nine million dollars. And we included a chart that identifies at a high level where those expenses would be. And again, this is very typical for what we'd see of a building of this vintage in Rhode Island. When we look at what some of the student-centric and programmatic needs are, there's a desire for an expansion of C T E. The existing layout is hard to supervise and control. There's a desire for a centralization of administration, guidance and nursing. Overall, the building needs modernization. They desire larger rooms for signature programs. They want provisions for small group and collaboration spaces, flexible furniture and technology to develop and enhance the central courtyard. Consider demolition and replacement of classrooms, gyms, C T E areas. Exterior and interior aesthetic upgrades are needed. And an enhancement to athletic fields. These were the types of comments we received from the educators and the administrators and school leadership. This is information that we cannot glean from walking on the roof or around your campus. Broad Rock, it does have deferred maintenance needs, although your newest school, but if you go back to that timeline, you're coming up on the twenty twenty-five-year window. And those needs are about fourteen point two million, but it's forecasted over ten years. And again, there are no programmatic improvements here. The largest portion here may be some H V A C equipment because that is what is expected to expire at the end of its useful life in twenty-five to thirty-five years. Now, the student-centric and programmatic needs that were discussed here include many of the same things that we hear. A lot of schools provide flexible furniture and technology, make provisions for that enrichment, small group and collaboration spaces, upgrade the media center. But based upon our assessment and our capacity analysis, there are minimal interior modifications necessary to support grades six through eight. And the capacity analysis does not suggest that an addition is needed at Broad Rock. Our capacity analysis showed a net capacity of five hundred and seventy students. According to the Nesdeck report, you will reach five hundred and seventy students for one year in twenty-five, twenty-six, but then you immediately decline. West Kingston, ten-year forecast, again, no programmatic needs, nine point six million. And those programmatic needs and student-centric wants that we heard, overall, building needs modernization, including the media center. Make provisions for small group and collaboration, bring in flexible furniture and technology, provide additional classroom electric capacity. Consider adding new gymnasium space. And exterior and interior aesthetic upgrades are needed. So this is what we heard from parents that may have attended this particular school-specific forum, as well as the principal and the educators. Matunik, very similar sister school, we expected this. This is a nine point one million-dollar ten-year forecast with the same wants and needs. Peace Dale. The ten-year forecast for just deferred maintenance was fifteen point seven million. And their programmatic needs were very similar to ones that we heard at the other elementary schools. Flexible furniture, technology, classroom electric, interior and exterior aesthetic upgrades, modernizing, small group collaboration spaces. I want to go back to what we're here for this evening is the ride stage one submission. Alright, it is required for your housing aid reimbursement. Stage one is the need. It identifies facility needs. It is not a commitment to a particular project. It is not a commitment to bond. I do want to mention that as the superintendent noted, there is the opportunity for a motion to submit. Um, I want to make one clarification that that is a school committee uh, submission, not town council necessarily. So stage two is something completely different. But we're here to talk about the stage one. And we provided a link to the draft stage one. It is a voluminous document. It includes a lot of information that the school building authority asks us to submit. We are still working through the draft. Some folks identified some corrections, and we gladly made them as we have continued along. We did erroneously identify on page one hundred and ninety-nine of one thousand six hundred and seventy-four pages. We identified North Kingston instead of South Kingston. I sincerely apologize. The merits were issued. During uh, the process, we've continued to select uh, fix misspellings, sentence structures, enhance the graphics. We want to make the best submission possible for you. You have gone down this path a couple other times and have been unsuccessful. We don't want to see that happen again. This is, this is your project. This is not my project. I do not live in South Kingston. I am here to help you get this project across the finish line. Uh, your trust has been shaken and rightly so. I'm embarrassed for my profession by that. Um, I can't correct that, but all I could tell you is that uh, if you have questions, I will answer them. If I do not know the answer, I will tell you I do not know the answer, and we will get back to you. And the heavy lift comes in the stage two, which is a lot more enjoyable, a lot more collaborative. It leads us to the next steps, which is to develop a solution through the stage two. And it is important to keep in mind that it is a balance. It is a balance between the project scope, the project size, the facility and programmatic needs with funding limits, debt ceilings, logistical constraints, other school and town needs. You will get sick of me saying that we need to be innovative, but we need to be responsible when we go through this process. I am committed and my staff is to making sure that the stage two process has robust communication, community participation, early and frequent engagement opportunities, and I can tell you from meetings with the school building committee that they are committed to doing that as well. I think you are off to a very, very solid start, a solid start that you may not have previously had. The last comment I'll say is that please help us deliver modern facilities at an affordable cost, sustainable architecture, spaces that allow our children to be creative, warm colors, and environment we can feel proud of. We have great teachers and families. We need our schools to reflect that. Happy to answer any questions or defer to your um, approach.
Thank you, Phil. So it's open to the committees? Just gesture with your hand and I'll just go right down. So uh, I'm gonna start with the chair of the town council first and then go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, Phil, thanks for coming. Thanks for the presentation. I do want to ask you a question. Uh, you asserted that the submission of stage one requires school committee approval and not approval by the town council.
Correct.
To gain clarification on that, is that correct?
Apparently.
Yes, it, as I mentioned, I will not answer a question unless I am confident. Stage one does not require town council approval. This is a school committee action.
Okay, let me ask you a further question. So there will be no action taken by the town council at this meeting relative to submission of stage one? Because stage one does not require any town council action at all?
The county council would have to determine if they want to take action, but stage one apparently does not require town council to take action.
Okay, that leads me to my next question. So the regulations of R I do not require town council approval for stage one, but we can opt or elect
Yes, you can.
Action to support it?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
And vice chair.
I don't want to beat this like all night, but I thought our town charter required town council approval.
Thank you for that. Can you write on down?
I just wanted to say, um, not for stage one. Um, but also um, to the members of the town council that we invited here, we want, we, we invited your presence here so that we could be all on the same page. So the building, school building committee had this, excuse me, had this discussion. And we wanted everybody that was an elected official who are making decisions for our community to all be present and get the same information at the same time so that there was no misinformation, which is why we invited you to join us, even though we knew that it wasn't necessarily going to be a vote at your table. Um, but we just wanted to make sure everybody had the same information.
Thank you again, Mr. Conti for being here and to the members of the town council for being here tonight. Um, realizing what the vote is in the request to the, to the school committee tonight is again to potentially approve stage one for going forward. I just want to clarify and, and having been at some of the um, sessions you mentioned with the community, that opportunity for engagement. Um, can you or our superintendent briefly just sort of talk about those next steps when the community could be engaged? Because I know that has been an ongoing request, desire, and I think need.
Uh, I'll, I'll take it a certain distance and others may want to take it farther, but in a recent school building committee meeting, a draft schedule that had identified a significant number of opportunities, evenings, weekends for engagement from now through the submission process, which is in February, was drafted. I'll defer to anyone else that may want to add to that.
Just follow up with that. Um, we have a link um, that Luke has been, um, Luke Murray created for us on the town website that links to an updated school building committee uh, page that will be kind of our portal where all the information will be filtered through. So there's a one-stop shop um, to, for all the information. The schedule is planned out tentatively through December. Paul is handing this hard copy to us, um, but it is online for anybody who wants to look and plan ahead. It does go forward through. Um, there are some references to dates in February, just so we know next steps, but meetings are planned out through um, December.
So if I may, um, what committees, both town council and school committee has in front of them is a construction uh, process schedule. You have a, a task and a description of the task. Then, then the next column is a start and finish column, followed by a calendar that rolls out. A similar document uh, was just handed out to those in the public who are here. And there is a, a link on the town website that will bring this document up for you. If you go down um, to the joint meeting on September number four, that's a perfect example where there's a joint uh, town council, S B C, the school building council, and some of those members are here, and some of those members are on uh, sitting here at the table, town council, school committee meeting. And then in the description, it reads an overview of the process, a presentation of the stage one report, which was just gone, uh, discussion and question and answer, which we are doing right now. Uh, and then the start of that would be tonight's date, and the conclusion of that would be for tonight's date. Um, and so that's just an example of this document. There are some opportunities, uh, all these meetings are open to the public, but there are also some Saturday opportunities. All of the meetings on the schedule that are not Saturday, uh, all the meetings that are on the schedule that are not Saturday will be in the town council chamber. It will be recorded. And it will go up on a YouTube channel that will be available to the public again from that, uh, from the town council website. The Saturday opportunities will happen here at the high school. Um, and we'll do our best to get those recorded and get those up as well. Uh, the minutes, past presentation, demographic data, uh, everything that um, that the school building committee, the school committee and the town council will have as data and documents will equally go up on that website and organized in a way that, that's uh, available and accessible to the public. There is a email address, school building. SBC that you can click on and send out questions and answers. To all members of the school building committee. We will all get that. We have a member who's volunteered to organize that and we have a standing agenda item on our agenda. Called communication. And at that point on the agenda at every school building. Committee meeting, we will discuss. Those communications, those questions and those things. And so it is, we're attempting to make it a very transparent. Process. We are attempting to have many opportunities for the public to interact actively with the subcommittee. There are touchstones where. Members of the school building committee will come back to school committee. Individually and come back to town council individually to update them. And again, share those data points and share those conversations and share what we're hearing from the public and share where we are in the process. That will get us to the, we hope to a successful place at the end of stage two. And then we will go from there, creating, hopefully creating another timeline. And different touchstones. And so that is a lot, so I will pause and take. Take questions from the committee and if there are no questions from the committee, I'll take one or two from the public just around that particular thing I just talked about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have a couple of questions. One regarding your presentation, a slide where you were showing us the, the need per square foot dollars invested. I have a question on what? Future proof means. That's the first time I've heard that term. And. Once you submit the stage one on September fifteenth, do you have any indication from Ride when you'll hear back on whether it has been approved or not?
I'd probably say you will know within a month. You know, the, the school building authority under, under Mario Carino's. Direction is very open. To. Part, to, to being an active participant. And, and I know I'm not committing them to anything they wouldn't already offer to you. But. I would suggest you engage the school building authority at Ride early. Bring them into one of these meetings. Part of their requirement is that they must visit the school during the stage two process. They must meet with the school building committee. Certainly can be a much larger meeting. I would engage them. They are very open. To taking phone calls from. Any member of the. Committees here. So I would probably say within a month. We will know. Whether our stage one has been accepted or not. They will. Offer. Comments. That. Will require us to add to the stage two. They may say, for example, provide additional information on. You know. Enrollment. I don't think they will do that here, but that's just an example. And then we come, we add that to the stage two. I, I can tell you that I have never had a stage one not be accepted. And we have submitted. At least. Eight or 10 school, different school districts within Rhode Island, stage one and stage twos. So I, I'm very confident. I know the process has been very thorough here. I know your. Process right now is very thorough and. I would anticipate a successful. Submission. You asked about future proofing. Future proofing is how much money would you have to spend per square foot every year to not have any deferred maintenance? So you have over six hundred thousand square feet of real estate. Building assets. So take eleven dollars a square foot, multiply that by six hundred thousand. And if you spent that every year. You would have no deferred maintenance. Which, as I mentioned. No one does. I think that was just a mathematician's. Attempt at humor possibly, but. It's, it's not going to happen anywhere. I remember.
Anyone else on the committee? Question about. Okay, so we'll return to the presentation and the statement application. Any questions? Hearing none, seeing none. We will turn to the public now. And so. The public is allowed to please approach the podium. And as you come up, the speaker shall introduce themselves by their name and their address. You'll get about three minutes to make your. Statement or to ask your questions. Mr. Conte is here, members of the school building council is here, school committee, town council. Again, our focus item is the agenda item is Studio Jade's presentation. And our stage one application or matters of general policy to wish to come before the committee in the areas of their jurisdiction. You could state your name and address so the notetakers can capture it because we don't have a, our normal clipboard.
Okay, my name is Roland Benjamin. Address is thirty-seven Rockland Drive. I just want to, I, a lot of you know that I've been on both sides of the, this, the table on issues like this. Mr. Conti made a, I think an appropriate statement that we're starting off with a pretty decent. Foundation. But I, I want to, I want to not forget that we did that before two thousand eighteen. And then we started to see. Sort of. We saw. Politics get in the way of this. We saw, so what, what I'm looking at right now is. Almost a reasonable estimation of what we might need over 10 years. With some pressing needs that are going to be determined over the next six months. And. Again, I think that's a reasonable approach. But I'm going to say this, one of the reasons why we saw the last plan start to fall apart. And I want to, this has been an issue of mine since I've gotten involved with politics here in town. Is. We can't have these kind, the magnitude of this project be divorced from what we're doing every year in an operational sense. Just since that. That initial good foundation with an exemplary stage one application in two thousand eighteen. We watched the per pupil expense go from. Twenty to twenty-one thousand dollars a kid to approaching twenty-eight thousand dollars a student. That's, that began the erosion of trust that the community had in the ability of our, our elected boards to actually manage a project to this scope. So all I'm suggesting, and this will, this won't be. Figured out before the next election, but the, the next budget. Will be a combination of your efforts before the election and the next councils and committees after the election. And I hope that those thoughts again are, are considered in ways that they've been ignored in the past. The inflation of the spending in the schools is a great concern when we see half the schools. Half the school community not even confident in the district. From that survey. I think it's important just to, to realize that we can't. To. Can't think about these two things, the annual budget and the, and a hundred and plus million dollar scope of maintenance projects over the next 10 years. They can't be in silos. They have to be dotted together. So that's all.
Thank you. Other members of the public.
Evening. My name's Kevin Sullivan. I reside at one seventy-nine Mulberry Drive. Here in town and. Yeah, thanks for asking the question to define future. Needs. I was wondering what that future proof might be. And to the moderator, I have a couple of questions. Am I limited to one question? They're, they're all on the presentation.
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes. Thank you. And so these are pretty much addressed to Mr. Conti. In one of your earlier slides. You put up. I think it was like seven items. In your survey where you. Inquired of the respondents what they thought priorities were and two of them were tied for first. And one of which I don't remember made sense. The other one was equity. And at the top of that column, you had two words, equality and equity. So I'd like to know what. Studio Jade's definition of equity is. I don't know. Okay.
Just continue, sir.
Perfect. I think it was in the same. Range of priorities. I guess I'm confused. How does the school district's ability? To provide for adequate social emotional needs. Fit into a facility. Renewal. Program. That. Seems like. Something that doesn't actually need a facility. It's more of a human intervention, I would think, but I'm not familiar with it. And then. Finally. You stated at a draft stage one of multiple pages over a thousand plane. Is available online, but if it's still in draft form. How's the school committee supposed to vote on it tonight? And I see that September fourteen is another possible date for a vote, which seems like that would be the only thing that works. And in light of that, when will the stage one's middle? Submission be finalized and ready for review prior to any vote?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's go take, could you share the presentation again? And we'll start with. Equality and equity. So. There were seven guiding principles that we asked people almost at every one of our engagement. Opportunities. To vote on what was important to them. And as I mentioned, there was a tie for number one. One is future ready. And that means that they expect their school facilities to be. Ready for the future, flexible, whether it's furniture, technology, more electrical outlets. Having rooms available for teachers to bring students and give them enrichment. Equitable. Is. Something different. And. I know it may be difficult to see on the slide. But if you look at the slide right above, you will see an image of three people. The image on the left has equality written underneath of it. And what that shows is that each person was given a box to stand on. Each box was the same size. However. If you look at the individuals, they are all different. If you look at the image to the right. That speaks to equity. You see that. The smallest person was given two boxes to stand on. The middle person was given one box to stand on and the tallest person, well, they didn't need a box. And now they can all see over the fence. You have a diverse population. They have diverse needs. You cannot treat them all the same. You do not want equality. You want equity. Within. Your district. Second question was asked. Regarding the survey, we received some comments on the survey. People had offered some. Ideas for if we did the survey again, how we could improve upon that. I appreciated that. We may introduce surveys in the stage two. It may be a valuable asset. Apparently your community responded. Well. To that. The reason why we ask probing questions like that in the stage one. Is to better understand how we could. Devise a solution in stage two that may help address some of those issues. There may be social and emotional needs that could be addressed. In a particular school, if there was a space for someone to. Have an intervention. A place to go. It, it's important for us to take the temperature of the district. Before we. Go into stage two. The stage one facility condition assessments tell us everything we need to know about roofs and boilers and windows. But what we don't know. Is what's happening within the district. And. What we saw is that there is some division. That needs to be addressed. And the stage two process may be. Doesn't have to be, but maybe an opportunity to. Sort of weave together. Some of those needs that are not related to facilities. But can be improved by facilities. The morale of teachers and students is much higher in a building. That looks fresh and new. And not. Old and worn. The last comment was regarding the draft stage one. There are. Maybe one or two items. That have been identified in the stage one as being incomplete. One of them is. A list of the building committee members and a brief resume on each one of them. That is a. Rather mundane piece of information that once we receive the resumes from everybody, we will insert it. There is a sheet that identifies that. And as we go through this document. And as it was pointed out, we want to make sure we capture. Anything that was a clerical error. I am absolutely confident in the submission that we made in the draft form. That there is sufficient information. To approve the submission of stage one. You do have the opportunity to make that. Approval on September fourteenth. It is a digital submission. Electronically on September fifteenth. And we will defer to. The committee's decision.
The September fourteen date that is here, that was attentive date in case we needed to wait until then. To vote on. Right?
Correct. In the presentation. At the beginning of the meeting. And. What we were operating on when we created the schedule that both committees have and the public has. The September fourteenth meeting, a town council, that joint meeting. That meeting has been moved to the twelfth. Right? So that September fourteenth is now September the twelfth. But if there were changes and so sent back to the SBC, we would have between now and the twelfth to make those changes and we would bring those. That document and those changes to the town council meeting on the twelfth, which would be the joint meeting between council and school committee. Apparently neither one of us can read a calendar. But we're okay. So let me recorrect that one more time. And jump in if I'm wrong, please. On September the twelfth. It is a count, council meeting alone. That is a regular town council business meeting. Am I correct? Let's see, nodding heads.
Yes.
So then on September the fourteenth. If needed. That is the joint town council and school committee meeting. And town hall. Am I correct with that?
It would, it would technically be a school committee meeting because it would only be needed if we don't approve the stage one tonight. It would, it would technically be a school committee meeting because it would only be needed if we don't approve the stage one tonight. So we put that as the fourteenth as the last possible moment to be able to to vote if we didn't clarify tonight that we wanted to move forward with the submission. And I just kind of want to clarify also as far as the vote tonight, we can vote on the draft to move it forward if we, for example, we have some clerical issues that need to be fixed. And I actually have one more to. It's the same issue, but on a different page, not the north, that that was the, that only happened once. But so it would be just a matter like the meat of the submit of the, excuse me, of the application unless that changes. Then we would want to go to the fourteenth, but if it's just edit edits and typos, we want to, we can do that on the fly, I'm assuming.
Correct edits and typos without adjusting the core of the document going to ride are things that you can create and fix without having to bring it back to committee. So once again, let me try to then clarify this one more time. On Monday, September the twelve is a town council business meeting. See, nodding heads. On September the fourteenth, if needed, there is a school committee business meeting to adjust changes around the stage one application. Three times the charm. But first you don't succeed. Lean on interventionist to help guide you and then move forward. So thank you all for your support on that. I appreciate it. Are there other questions from the public? Again, please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Daniel Secconi. I live at fifty Gention Drive, South Kingston. I'm new here. I've never been involved in town politics at all. I'm very passionate about the school project going here. I went to school here in ninety-three, I graduated. And one of the things I want to point out, and having not been to any of these meetings before, I don't know if this was discussed. But the idea of deferred maintenance, what that really truly means. And if you put it in perspective, a building has a lifespan of so many years, break, age. Sorry, they have an age, they have an age and things have to be fixed and repaired and maintained. And the idea is that deferring it, you're putting it off. So the idea of future proofing is doing all your maintenance currently and not putting it off. So in essence, I could compare South Kingston schools to a car that's had the oil light going off for a while. The maintenance hasn't been done and things have been breaking. And it's very apparent since ninety-three, when I was here, you walk through the space, still looks a lot like the same. You know, there's some new stuff, there's some new floor tile. And that's great. But again, it's cleaning up some of the things that you don't necessarily need for the visual effect. So that's one of the big things for me. If we don't do it now, it's just going to continue to get worse. Right now, we currently have an opportunity to put it into the state and potentially get funding from the state to help us and the feds. We're catching up on maintenance that hasn't been done. And I look at the schools, two different ways of education. You have a building that is responsible for drawing in families and drawing in teachers. It's exciting to work in a new facility to have cutting edge technologies to do the work that they need to do. I had the opportunity to work at Bryant University and build the Academic Innovation Center to see teaching in the two thousand twenties is an amazing thing. Sort of bring South Kingston up to that timeframe would be a wonderful thing. This town is fantastic. We've proven that our educators are fantastic. We rank in the country for our education ability, but yet we're giving them a vessel to do that. It's not up to the date. So I think we owe it to the town to at least pass this piece, stage one, because we know there's a need. And let's put it in front of ride to show that there's a need and to see where it goes from there.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Again, please state your name, address.
Gary Chapman, South Road in Wakefield. The question I have is that most of the slides on the buildings that came up, the biggest spend was heating and ventilated. I think almost every building. And so the question I have is, is that I thought the federal government gave school departments across the country billions of dollars, and I'm not meaning billions of dollars for here, but in general to deal with specific issues like that because that was a concern during COVID. So I guess my question is, did you get federal money? How much money did you get and how much did you spend on things like heating and ventilated? And if you didn't spend any, is it still available to put forth for this, these projects?
Go, is that something we can take a note of so we can get an answer? I don't, I don't want to, we don't have that answer at our fingertips, but can we take note of that?
I did take note of it.
Okay, thank you.
Laura Robuck, Periwinkle Road. Snug Habba. So I've been a part of this for a long time. Many of you know that. This is our third stage one submission. There's no doubt in my mind, if we sent it even with the mistakes, it'll get passed. Everyone knows where we need help. Everyone knows our building situations. Roland brought up a great point, politics. I'm sacrificing being here tonight a lot. All of you are. We have an election coming up. Is this a waste of time? Are we going to get a new school committee and a new town council? And come November on this piece of paper, it's for not? Are we wasting money on another consulting firm, which, sorry, but you have like three go-bys, right? We've done this two other times. It is politics. We have alumni coming up, we have teachers, we have the best staff in South Kingstown. People are leaving. A lot of it's the brick and mortar. East Providence High School, Narragansett, Charahoe, Prouds putting a new addition on. Everyone around us is improving. And I think it's our job to come together and sell it. I remember we tried to have a marketing committee. You know what? We need a town. We need a town that comes together and all sides, put the politics aside. We're gonna have to open up our wallets. It's gonna get uncomfortable. Stage two, it's gonna get uncomfortable, but where's the community? Where's the town? Everyone's talking about one of the next meetings where people can come up and have input. But where are they tonight? We all know there's nothing more frustrating. We've had a stage two application get passed by ride. We went to bond. The bond didn't pass. And a lot of that is because where was my voice in it? How come I didn't get a turn at the table? No one took my insight. Where are they tonight? And if we're that concerned about community input, it's our job, everyone here, look to your left, look to your right and go tell everyone, did you know last night's school committee meeting was about the stage one application? Do you know what the stage one application is? Everyone knows that this building needs a paint job, needs whatever, right? Upgrades, we did get the pillars painted, right? Stuff is happening. Our schools are awesome. You wouldn't be sitting here if you didn't think our schools weren't awesome. You wouldn't be a part of this town and sacrificing tonight if you didn't think this town was awesome and worth it. We have to sell that. So I'm glad Roland mentioned politics. I'm fearful because come November, this could all be another waste of time. We've, I've been through three superintendents. God only knows how many school committee members resigned, got kicked off. How many seats were appointed? I don't even know who's appointed and who's voted. And November is not going to be pretty. But what are we going to do? Are we going to stand strong and put the politics aside and say, this is for the kids? My kids aren't going to benefit from this. Your kids are probably not going to benefit from this. It's the future of SK. And we pride ourselves in education. We have the university in our back pocket. We know that. We talked about that in the spring. Utilize URI more. They're making national news from our alumni, SK alumni out there in the world making a huge difference. Remember in the spring, we had a Grammy award winner? We are the future, but we have to believe in each other and put differences aside, not for politics, for our kids, for our neighbors' kids, for our teachers. Our teachers are here because they want to be. They could have gone out and gotten other jobs, hundred percent. Any teacher that's in SK right now isn't here for the pension. They're here because they love the kids. So let's come together. I mean, it's isn't meant to be like a hurrah, but really I'm afraid of November. I hope you guys can be truthful and look at kids and say, yeah, we're going to make a change and it's going to be uncomfortable and it's going to cost a lot of money, but it's going to be worth it.
Other members of the public? State your name, address, please.
My name is Doral Deasley. I live on Biscuit City Road in Kingston. Two numbers, Mr. Conti's presentation really stood out to for me. The first one was how much money and deferred maintenance or and maintenance that this this high school is going to require if if we, if the high school stays in this building. It's fifty million dollars. Now, he said that was not including any programmatic upgrades. So you know, it's, it's no new, it's no walls taken down, no CT, new CT spaces, all the rest of the, on that second, second slide after the forty-nine point five million dollar slide. So I don't know, what are we looking at? Seventy-five, maybe eighty million dollars fixed in maintenance for ten years and also to improve this building. Now, right, right expects when you get this, when you get this buy money and you fix your schools, right, expects that to be a fifty year fix. Five zero, fifty years. In three years, this built, the original part of this high school will be seventy years old. So that means by the time any work's done, they're going to expect that what we've done will now get to this building to a hundred and twenty years. First of all, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think, I don't think it's a good investment. Number one, to stay in this building. Secondly, because the size of your, the size of your projected high school enrollment is going to mean that one third, one third of this building, two hundred and thirty-four thousand square feet. They're only going to give you money to to build or fix one hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. So one third of this entire building, you're not going to get any money for. So what are you going to do with it? So basically that third is the three-story nineteen ninety-five edition. This this cafeteria, all the spaces up to where the library is, all the rest of it, they would give you money to fix. The second number that he brought up is the projected enrollment in this district for the year twenty thirty, thirty-one. Two thousand one hundred and eighty-two students. I said, I've said this so many times at these meetings. And it's this, am I the only person in this town? If that number is in fact correct, two thousand one hundred and eighty-two, in the year twenty thirty-one, that will have meant that we have lost fifty percent, five zero percent of our students in thirty years. There's, there's no other, there's no other school district in this state that comes close to that. Barrington and East Greenwich's enrollments over the, over the past twenty years have fluctuated plus or minus two hundred for twenty years. Ours is going down eighteen hundred. The University of Rhode Island.
Excuse me?
I was wondering if we can have a second shot at the, at the puzzle here?
Can you bring your thing to a conclusion?
Yeah, that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments from the community? Hearing none, seeing none. Are there additional comments from the committee?
Can we have, well, come back for two more minutes since no one else wants to speak and then close it out?
Well, the committee's giving you two additional minutes.
If if the voters in Rhode Island pass the three hundred million dollars, or maybe it's two hundred and fifty million dollars, again, another fifty coming from somewhere else, million dollars for, for school upgrades, referendum November. That's really going to be good news for, for could be really good news for us. And here's why, because they're going to be two five percent incentives that weren't in the first one. The first go around, and they're both on green to build to, to build or convert your buildings and to make them more energy efficient, greener they are, then you'll get a five percent reach one. So we shouldn't have any problem getting up to fifty percent. This go around now. To me, the money, we would be better spent to build a new high school. And this building, this whole two hundred and thirty thousand some square feet could be with with town and community come together. This could turn into workers' housing, low income and retail on the first floor facing the road. You could really turn this into something that we could, that the community really needs, which is more housing for people that don't make a lot of money. In nineteen seventy, nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, this high school academic decathlon team won back-to-back state championships. What this used to be if not the number one, right up there with Barrington and East Greenwich. We, we're, we're not that, we're not that high school now. We're not this, we're not the high school district now. And East Greenwich, they have the same number of students as we do this year. And their school budget is twenty-four million dollars less than ours. That's where the money, that's where the money will come from to fix our schools.
Thank you. More comments from the public? Come to the podium. Restate your name, please.
I'm still Kevin Sullivan. I still live on Mulberry Drive. I just want to correct any misimpression. I am very much in favor of phase one being submitted. I am not at all inclined to see this held up. It's clear that improvements need to be made in our school district. I may disagree a little bit about why the last one failed at the bond stage. You know, in my opinion, it was kind of a pig in a poke. A lot of people said they didn't have any input, but I think that was a secondary reason, if just in a lot of people's opinions, including mine, if it was not a good plan. So I hope So I hope. I have high hopes that the school building committee, working with the professional firm, will come up with a good plan. That really addresses the needs. Realizing that there are budgetary limitations and town has other needs. So I, I did want to just say that. I'm an engineer by education and training. And I'm familiar with volume, this reports, voluminous, or however you want to say it. And I'm just curious. How long you guys have had to review a thousand plus pages? Even though it's in draft. And even though I recognize because I've produced them, a lot of it's copy paste clearly from South North Kingston. Probably from previous ones here. So it's probably not all that new, but. The only reason I ask that question, I'm not trying to delay a vote. There's, I hope that people responsible for this. Take the time to read and understand, and I know there's no commitment to a project or anything. But I would hate to set a precedent or give an impression of pride that we're looking for something that the town is. Town citizens are not going to go for. That was my only concern. And I appreciate you trying to find the information that Gary Chapman asked about. But shouldn't someone be able to answer the question, not the dollar figure, but. I know you got money. Somebody should know how much you got. And was any spent? As it was supposed to be on infrastructure, water, all that kind of stuff? Or did it just go to signage and flower baskets for villages? Because, you know, if you remember two years ago, air quality was a big thing, you know, fresh air, get, get the kids proper H V A C. And I haven't seen any of it, but I don't pay that close attention. Thanks for the double date.
May I ask a question? So to follow up on what Mr. Sullivan said and what Mr. Chapman said. I understand that we're not going to get that question answered tonight for them, but how will the community get that information? How will it be shared? I don't think. Only two people should be informed of that. I think. Everyone might want to know how much money we got from the federal government and how it was used. So could you just share that?
Sure. So the. The question will be brought back to the school committee and shared with them. Because it is S B C type of question, that question will also be brought to the school building committee. And the supporting data and documents that we have to go with it. So for example, if you were given. A hundred dollars, we spent all hundred of those dollars on. Air purifiers to place in every single classroom on the first floor. That would be something that we would collect as data and information, bring back to the school committee, bring back to the S B C. If we got a hundred dollars and we spent a hundred dollars on air handler exchanges at. Matunik. That would be something we would collect, bring to the full school committee, and then bring back to the school building committee. I think there's something to note, the value about the, the two questions. Is that it is type of, it is the type of information that we would bring to the S B C for stage two discussion. Around the needs, we've identified the needs. And so what are the things that we've done to address some of these needs? Because we have done some stuff to address them. And then with that information, that, that committee would have a discussion about, okay, so what's next?
I appreciate that very much. I just. Feel like that information will be. This isn't the correct word, but sort of obscured because Mr. Sullivan or anyone who's interested. Would have to watch dog of an agenda, pay attention to that, to see when it comes up to know to come. So. I, I, when you start to give examples, in my head, I go, oh, yeah, they did buy air purifiers, or they did do something. But I don't think. I don't think people need to be. Waiting and watching an agenda to get an answer to, to that type of question, because to me. We, we should have that more available and accessible. Because I feel like at the council, we kind of had a finance director. Zach was really good about coming up and answering all those questions, and we've been lucky.
One of the things that we discussed within the school building council was to wait to make information available to the public in a timely manner. We talked about the pros and cons of the school district presenting information on its website. We, we talked about the town using the town's website. What we've decided to do was use the town's website and to bring all of our information there. And so that's where people could find it as well, besides coming to school committee meetings and coming to the school building council meetings. But simultaneously, our, our school building council meetings, as we discussed and mentioned earlier, that those meetings will also be recorded. And placed on the website, so people can follow that along as well. We have identified opportunities within our schedule for. Many contacts with the public. We've also identified Saturday contacts and opportunities for the public. And if folks have suggestions and they want to bring those forward, we're more than welcome to hear those suggestions to bring those forward. We are making every effort to be very open, to be very transparent, to be very collaborative. And if we're not reaching that high bar that we expect of ourselves, then. We welcome your feedback and encouragement, and we'll make adjustments on the fly as needed. So because we are in a school committee, the school committee process is, is that I would go back and get the information. I would bring it back to the committee, but simultaneously, because of the context, I would also bring it back to the school building committee. But I do take your point, and I appreciate your comment.
I, I would like to. It's, it's kind of like a clarifying. Question. So the gentleman back there that originally asked a question. Or made the statement, what he said was, is that the government had gave up, had. A lot of catered billions of dollars. For schools. So my knowledge is, is that the schools were given across the state as a funds. Okay, so those S of funds. Were to go for specific needs within our schools over a period of time. So I guess for me, what the confusion is, is. Did you think that, or did I miss? That this billions of dollars was to go for the infrastructure of the schools. And not for student needs within side the schools, which is what the S of funds to my. Knowledge outside of the first original first S of fund, which was used. For air purifiers and et cetera inside of our schools to make them more healthier. So I'm confused on whether or not.
If I may, I'm sure that's a very good point. So the first round of S R S R one was used for. P P E safety was used for air purifying, was used for cleaning of buildings. S R one was in the early stages of the pandemic when. We were trying to get, keep schools open and keep buildings open and keep things healthy and safe. Many districts also use some of S R one funding to either bring in. Outside folks to help clean and sanitize the buildings. Or to offer opportunities to interior folks to stay longer and work longer to clean and sanitize the buildings. And so that was part of S R one. Masks were purchased, hand sanitizer, sanitizer was purchased. Gloves were purchased, some of S R one was used to move from. Concrete, plastic trays to disposable trays, disposable forks. Some things were used where water fountains were repurposed. So you're no longer putting your mouth on a water fountain. So all of that was within the original S R one. S R two came along and it provided more, some funds for. Continuation of P P E, but also set aside funding for intervention and set aside funding for learning loss. S R three came along and let me complete with S R two. With S R two, the requirement was that you had to set aside a certain amount of money to combat learning loss. S R three came along and with an S R three, it gave you opportunities for social emotional learning. For academic enhancement, for teacher growth and for to address learning loss. And so those are your three forms of S R funding from, from a school perspective. I, I think to the gentleman's question around ventilation and, and kind of large. Repairs like that, there was some additional funds that came for schools that had. Challenges around. Ventilation challenges around getting air movement in their building. And that additional source of funding would go through the Department of Ed, and then that would be dealt out as they saw it. So generally speaking, those were the three Sers that came to the schools. And kind of the categories that we were allowed to spend them in. Just one last point, Madam Chair. Just to remind the committee that following our open meeting policy as a school committee, we don't normally engage the public with conversation. We take notes and listen, but in this case, it is kind of an open forum. So I'll step down and I'm here if you.
So, so my question is, is for you just to clarify. So there has not been any funds given to the district at this time for infrastructure. For any maintenance needs to the buildings outside of. Air ventilation.
Well, clearly you have your capital and capital projects and things like that, which comes from your local funds, but if you're talking about. Funds from the federal government in the sense of large contributions, no, S R was probably. Your largest contribution and how the district at the time chose to spend it, I'd have to research and find out, but. Just knowing from what I've seen when I walk through the buildings, many of it went towards air purifiers, for example.
So I appreciate you giving that information and more to address what I think your point ended up. Like your underlying point was, how do we have this conversation, this larger conversation, so that. It's not just the twenty people here who now know the answer, but how it's for the general population. And this isn't, it's not on our agenda, so I'm going to tread lightly here. We have had discussions and a request, actually, I put in a request to our admin team and to. Raquel, our CFO, for our budget subcommittee to host a public forum specifically on budget. And specifically on S R funds and COVID and how that works. So that will be forthcoming, but again, it's not on our agenda for tonight. So to dive into the details would, wouldn't. We can't do that under our school committee.
Oh, do have that date for at the end of the meeting. For the public.
Are there other questions from the committee? Hearing none, seeing one, Madam Chair, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
At this time, I will ask for a motion.
I'll try this. To, I'll make a motion to.
Hold on one second. I do apologize. At this time, there is. The town needs to adjourn.
Giving me a motion to adjourn.
Yes, we need to make, make a motion to adjourn the meeting and then.
Motion for the town council to adjourn.
All right, here a motion for the town council to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Do a motion in the second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, seeing none of us through to zero, we are now adjourned.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Have a good night. Okay, now we will proceed with school committee business and with that. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the stage one application.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve this. Stage one application be submitted with the understanding that there are still some typos and. So forth that need to be cleaned up, but other than that.
Second.
Is there any further discussion amongst the committee? Okay, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. I just want to again thank the members of the town council and the members of the building. Group who have been working on this, including community members. I, in my role as school, school committee member, am not someone. Who's currently up to run for office. I am also not a member of this committee. So I am grateful to have the information and just wanted to address the community question of typically, we see information. Three, four, you know, days ahead of time. So this is weighty in-depth information and having also lived through the prior experiences. I, I am comfortable looking at it as a draft at, at this point, knowing that there is work to do. And, and making this as public as possible now, so that we are getting feedback from as many. Members of the community who are present and who are able to review this online as well. So I just wanted to respond to that question and say there is more review to do. I am not one of the members who has had as much time with this document as some of the folks at this table, and I'm not sure who else is in that category. But wanted to acknowledge that and, and accept as the motion was stated as a document in draft, and I do that at this time.
Ms. Better.
I just wanted to say that although I missed most of the presentation tonight. I was at both of the prior school building committee meetings, so I have seen the presentation in its entirety. And I've also had the draft for, you know, many days to review. So I just wanted to put that on the record that even I missed the presentation, I really didn't. Because I was at those prior meetings.
Ms. Messina.
I, as with everyone else, I've obviously been part of the, part of the. School building committee, so I've, I'm very familiar with this. I would like to just fill. The, the other edit, just to make sure that it's on, on record, is the similar one to. The, the Wakefield Elementary School where there's a reference to Curtis Corner Middle School. There's another section, I think it's on page forty nine, it says the same thing. It's in reference to Wakefield Elementary School. So as long as that gets clarified, I support the, the application itself. Obviously with just the updates of any sort of mistypes or typos that need to be updated.
Mr. Mall.
Just a couple of comments. I also missed the initial part of the presentation, but. I've been working with Mr. Conti since late fall last year on this through the school committees, building subcommittee. They have done a tremendous amount of work. There has been very ample opportunities for public input. And they've actually gone out of their way to seek input from the public. I have complete confidence in the. Document to be submitted, and I've had conversations with Mr. Conti. About this being a work in progress and an ongoing process with pride. Even while the stage one is building is. Submitted and being considered to begin looking at with the building committee. Moving on to a phase two. And so there are a couple of reasons why we need to do this and why I'm comfortable voting for this tonight. The first is the amount of work. Um, the first is the amount of work that's been done. The second, in somewhat in addressing, addressing, uh, comments from the public tonight. I think the town needs to do this, hopefully together. There is a solid, good faith group on the school building committee, on the town council and on the school committee that people ought to have faith in, come and listen to the meetings, offer the input. We need to come up with something together that most of the town this time will support. And everybody at this table is willing to do that and wants to come up with what is doable. It would be wonderful to have a new high school. We went and visited as part of the building subcommittee, we went and visited the brand new East Providence High School to the tune of a hundred and eighty million dollars, and they have a much larger population than we do. Part of this process is figuring out what's doable. This group is going to do that with the public. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. Um, I can certainly align with you all. I'm ready to get behind a doable project to help move our district forward and give our students what they need to have a better public education here. Um, because I lived here all my life. And I have gone through these schools, I put my children through these schools. And now my grandchildren are going through these schools and not much has changed at all. Just like the gentleman back there said, you know, there's been some facelifts here. We have to do better. And as Ms. Mallon said, there's been a lot of work that has been done. I too was a part of the, uh, school building committee. And I did tour those schools along with him. They're very beautiful schools. However, that doesn't mean that we have to go to that stream, but we do need to do better and we can do better. If we all work together. So thank you all for being here and I will do a roll call on this vote. So Mr. Mall, uh, Mr. Mallon.
Aye.
Ms. Fetter.
Aye.
Ms. Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Massanancy.
Aye.
Ms. Bussa.
Aye.
And myself, is I, that motion passes. Um, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, um, to have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, that motion passes. Before I entertain the motion of adjournment, I want to announce the upcoming meetings. Nine nineteen twenty-two is our policy subcommittee. Nine nineteen twenty-two is also a budget subcommittee meeting. On nine twenty twenty-two is our school committee business meeting. And on nine twenty-two twenty-two is a school building committee. And on nine twenty-seven twenty-two, the school committee will have a workshop meeting. Those are the meetings going forward for this month in regards to our school district. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, um, Paula, will all of those meetings agendas be posted on the Secretary of State's website? Thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Yes. I can add that.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at eight forty-eight. Thank you.